Okay, everybody. It is 6:30. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for June 2nd, 2022. And this is held via Zoom. And we do have a quorum. Do you have any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
Just one. We received a last minute email from Nancy Adler with a picture.
Okay. Okay. Minutes, we have the minutes for May 5th and the 19th. If everybody's okay with them, I'd suggest we adopt them as is.
So move. Second.
All in favor? All right. Okay, on the communications and announcements. We have an email from LND Florenza regarding the colony. An email from Mr. Anu requesting photos for the Housing and Smart Communities Initiative. An email from Nancy Schoffler regarding a follow-up letter regarding the casino. We have an email from Nancy Adler also regarding the casino. We have an email with attachments from HQ regarding their house and the scenic overlay, answering some questions that we had. We have an email from Supervisor McKenna regarding the zoning amendments which we've been passed around. We have an email from Ashley regarding the same amendments to Chapter 260. Oh, no, this is different. This is regarding the amendment to the Chapter 260 Light Industrial District regarding the library getting permitted. We have an email and documents from W. Thompson Esquire also regarding the casino. And we have an email from Keith regarding the zoning and amplified sound issues. So, under new business, under scheduled business, we have two sketch plan reviews. And then a discussion on Housing Oversight Task Force and zoning amendments. And then the amendment for Chapter 260, the light industrial. So our first sketch plan review is 105109 Mill Hill Road LLC, Special Use Permit Number 21-0162E. This is a second sketch plan review of a site plan review application to enhance parking lot to remedy a violation in the R. 1.5 zoning district located at 105109 Mill Hill Road in Woodstock. And the representatives of Christopher Hellman and Amy Dunphy. So.
As well as Nancy Adler, too, landlord.
Okay. So let the applicant please tell the planning board what they're proposing.
All right. Go ahead. So Nancy, the landlord, is going to talk about the matter right now. So she's the landlord, she's gonna.
Yeah, I understand. I just, normally, we want to hear the, refresh the planning board what it is the applicants are doing.
Okay. All right. We're asking for the stock work permit to be lifted. We did, we started working on the parking lot, never imagining it would turn into this huge ball of fire. And that's what we want. And I want to reference my. I want to reference my earlier letter to the planning board, which sums up my feeling about Nancy Schoffler. I'm tired of the drama, tired of being stalked by this neighbor. I want my property to grow and I want it to thrive. I want it to grow in value. Gianni is a talented chef. He provides skilled work for many people. He pays them a good wage, a good living. He's been abused by Nancy Schoffler for many years and has spent thousands of dollars defending his business. I'm asking all members of the planning board to dismiss the false complaints which are based only on malice and allow me to finish the work that was stopped, which is laying gravel and cleaning up debris. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. Let me just, for the planning board's sake, let me just refresh everyone. Because we did get a lawyer, a letter from a lawyer stating why they needed more parking spaces if they weren't adding more buildings. And the answer is very simple. The zoning enforcement officer instructed them to fix their parking because they were not in compliance because their original site plan was just a sketch. It was just a hand-drawn sketch and you couldn't delineate the parking spaces clearly enough to know if they had the right amount. So we asked them to professionally get a delineated parking space map, which they've done. And they've now shown that they have the exact amount of parking spaces that are required. So they had to add this 12 more spaces along the back to meet that. So that's why it's here. We're just basically fixing a violation that the zoning enforcement officer issued that they didn't have the parking lots delineated correctly and have the right amount. So now they do. So that was basically the issue. So the next step of this is that every property owner has a right to peacefully enjoy their property. And so the issue now is that we want to make sure that the parking addition, which this is a site plan review of the site plan of the parking, has the required buffering between the parking spaces and adjoining property lines. And if you read the codes, the codes basically say that for parking lots that are over five spaces, that there has to be sufficient screening. And the code uses 25 feet and at one point uses 150 feet, saying that there has to be 150 feet between the property line and the parking spaces. And that all vegetation and trees in that space need to be preserved for screening purposes. So that's basically where we stand. I'm gonna ask members of the planning board, especially Stuart, if he sees that code the way I read it. I know before, the planning board has been able to issue or insist on screening, specifically fencing. But that's in areas where you don't have the 25 to 150 foot in between, like we did with Waterfall Way. We made them put up fencing because they were literally five feet from the next house. In this case, it's asking for screening. And if you look at the plans, there's about 150 feet between the property line and the proposed parking spaces. So I give it up to the board to ask questions or come up with ideas for screening this parking area. Go ahead, Judy.
Didn't we last meeting talk about fencing and vegetation?
We did.
On the Schaffler side of the fence?
We did. And now I've reread the code under parking regs and everything. And it says that if you have that distance that's required, that's what's required. Yeah, go ahead, Stuart.
So are you saying, can you hear me, Peter?
Yep.
So are you, you read the code as saying that if you have 150 feet, there doesn't have to be any, that satisfies the screening requirement?
If there's vegetation in there. And the code also says you can't cut the trees over six inches, I think it was.
Right. So is there vegetation or are you thinking that we need to require more or just to preserve what's there?
Well, definitely preserve what's there. I understand Nancy Schoffler's position is that in order to create those parking spaces, they had to clear vegetation. So really, it's up to the board to decide whether there's adequate protection, screening, from these additional parking spaces to the adjoining property lines.
And do we have any site visit information to weigh in on that?
Well, we have the actual site plan, which they did for the parking spaces, which shows the property line.
But in terms of adequacy of screening, I know that the neighbor had sent in photos and also raised an issue of lighting, that some of the lighting is not downward facing dark skies, you know, shielded lighting, dark skies compliant. And that would have to be discussed as well.
Definitely lighting has to be in compliance.
Since the 1970s, those lights have been there.
Who's speaking?
Nancy Adler.
We can't hear you, Nancy. Can you speak up?
1970s, we did not take down any vegetation when we did the work that we did. I sent pictures of the screening, there's adequate screening.
I want to ask that anybody who speaks, asks Peter Cross for permission to speak because just breaking in in the middle doesn't, doesn't work.
I feel I have to write something that's incorrect when somebody is speaking to the board.
All you have to do is put your hand up and get called on.
Okay, so obviously, the issue is that we want to make sure that that there's adequate buffer between the parking and the property line. And that's up to the planning board. I mean, we have the right to ask for fencing. We have in the past. But the code seems to indicate that if there's that much space between the lot line and the parking space, that that's adequate, providing there's vegetation in between.
Peter?
Yeah.
Yeah, Stuart here. Is the vegetation shown on the updated site plan? Or did the updated site plan just show, you know, delineated parking? Does it show the existing vegetation?
Not really, no. It just shows the, you know, the parking lot, the parking spaces in relation to the property lines.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm not comfortable, I'm not comfortable passing on something that's not on the presentation, not on the plan. That's my own view about it. It's not written in stone, but that's what we usually do. You know, there's usually, whatever the features are of the parcel, they need to be on the plan.
I mean, I don't know if Judy's can get that plan up on the screen.
I don't know if I got it. Is this something we got some weeks ago?
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Let me, let me look for it, then I can.
It's a, it's a pretty simple site plan.
Yeah, somebody's got it up on the screen there. I can't read it from there, so.
No, I have to find it and I don't know where I put it. I'm sorry.
So wouldn't a fence just take care of almost all of these problems? It would, there's all this accusations of trespassing and accusations of, you know, and the headlights are definitely an issue, I would imagine. And so I just feel like a decent fence would just be the answer.
I've got it.
You got it?
Yes. Let's just see if this shows the vegetation.
I don't see, little bits, maybe.
It's not clear how far it is from the, is this is the property line right here?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so we don't have footage indicated there. This is a fence?
Well, well, there's photographs Nancy sent of what currently exists. So obviously, in the winter, there's not as much shrubbery because it literally cannot exist, which is the photo that the neighbor sent. But Nancy Adler sent a photograph of how it currently exists. And.
But they took, saw them the photographs?
To be honest, it's completely full and nothing, nothing was removed from the. It was removed besides dead, you know, dead shrubbery that was, that was black, brown, so.
On, on the left-hand side of the plans, it says propose new parking, propose new parking with 10-inch road base and 4-inch gravel topping, new 4-feet fence, new 5- to 6-feet evergreen plantings, random decorative stones, random grass and plantings.
Which, which, yeah, exactly. So that's.
I mean, if you see it right here.
Those are, those are items that we already removed when we, when we did the extension. So those already exist, they just need to be put in place again so that there's, the rocks and different brush needs to already be put in place. But it's gonna die right now if we don't have it, you know, if we can't do it. So.
Stuart again.
Yeah, Stuart.
So do I know from looking at this map where the fence is going to be located? Is that indicated?
We don't, we. Nancy, you can, you can tell him that. We don't.
It says new 4-foot fence.
Right, but where?
We're not putting a fence.
We're not, we're not gonna.
Um, in my opinion, you should put a fence up.
We're not putting a fence up.
Well, if they've already proposed a 4-foot fence, then, then I don't see there's a problem.
We said there's 150 feet of distance between, there's plenty of shrubbery.
I can't hear whoever's speaking.
I can't hear.
Nancy's talking, but.
I can't hear what she's saying.
There's 150 feet, the distance between the parking lot and Nancy Schoffler's property is at least 150 feet. And it is completely camouflaged with green, with green trees.
All right, I have trouble hearing her too, but let's just clear with the planning board. If there's a proposed fence, then we, I think we all agree that's, that's.
They proposed the fence without speaking to me. I did not know about the fence.
All right, so Nancy, you, you have to get this site plan accurate for the planning board.
We'll get it.
Because this is, this is exactly what they're looking on and what they're viewing. And if you're saying there's not gonna be a fence, then that can't be on this site plan.
We will take it off the site plan.
And the distances ought to be on the mark, on the drawing.
As well as existing vegetation.
Exactly.
The goal has to be depicted on the chart.
Ralph, don't you think the photograph will help?
But again.
It's on the site plan. It has to be listed. This is why you're back here in front of us and why we need this site plan.
The shrubbery is, it's, it's all wild. I mean, I don't know what the plants are. We'll just put bush here, bush there, shrub here, shrub there.
I'm looking at the photograph and a lot of it is deciduous. In the winter, it would not scream very well. I think a fence is necessary.
Well, we have before us a site plan that says new fence on it. So if we're gonna approve the site plan, it's, we're approving the fence.
Well, that's, that's, that's something that was a bit confusing the last, the last meeting. I thought we, this net, this next meeting would be to determine if we actually need it and that we needed a site plan, which we paid over $800 for because the board said we needed to fence on there. And then I thought that it was, we're gonna discuss what actually needed to be done. So maybe we resubmit a new site plan with, with how we, Nancy wants it.
But I think we should also discuss rather than a fence, which I find to be offensive. You know, perhaps we could put a couple of the scotch pines, which provide a quick and year-round, and a year-round screen.
This is Brian, if I may. So here's the deal. I mean, there's been a lot of back and forth on this and you're now submitting a site plan to us that is saying certain things, but then you're coming back and saying, well, we don't want to do the fence. So what you need to do, and we don't have time for this back and forth. You've got to resubmit, you've got to decide what you want to do. And also, you have a hostile neighbor. So you don't have a collaborative situation. So you have to figure out what you're gonna do to satisfy that in the, in, I guess, in the sense of this plan and what some of the planning board members have suggested to you. So that's what we need to do.
Can I make another point? This neighbor is never going to be satisfied, as you can see, by the volume of paperwork that's going back and forth. So at this point, I am gonna satisfy myself and hope for the best.
Okay, so the bottom line is we have an application for a site plan in front of us, but the applicant doesn't want to use that site plan. So I can only tell the applicant that the planning board is definitely leaning in favor of having the fence. We haven't taken a vote on it or even a, you know, but I can tell you that's, that's where we're leaning.
4-foot fence, you know, it's gonna be, I mean, a white plastic fence, it's gonna be terrible.
It doesn't have to be what it is. It can be a wooden fence that will weather. The point is to block headlights.
Listen, as having been in the construction business many years, these wooden fences do not last. There's nothing but maintenance with them and they rot and be replaced in two, three years. And, and also, the estimate's very high, it's thousands of dollars to put in.
Unfortunately, finances are not an issue in front of the planning board. But what is in front of us is an application for a site plan and apparently the applicant wants to pull that application. So that's where we are.
Okay.
Yeah, and wants to come back with a new application, so that's, that's what we're doing.
Clear, so our new site plan needs to be what we, what we want, not what is suggested, correct?
But then we may reserve the right.
Voice dropped off, I didn't hear the last part.
Just to be clear, the new site plan to be submitted, just because, you know, this costs a lot of money, first of all, business in town, to get these site plans. We.
Let me make one more suggestion. Why doesn't she put a fence on her property?
Okay, but finances cannot come before the planning board. So the issue is quite simple. You can come back with a new plan, but I'm gonna be straight up that the planning board, if you read our code, we have the right to ask for blocking. We have the right to ask for fencing or blocking from parking to residential lots. We have the right to do that. Judy?
I would like to make a point about parking and the distance from the lot line. It may very well be that the distance is sufficient to meet the letter of the law. But the law also says light should not cross the property. And when somebody is pulling into a parking space at night with their headlights on, the light will travel a good deal further than 120 feet. So you need to block that light. That's on the property owner.
James knows his hand.
Yeah, I missed the part where, why did the fence go away? Like, why don't we put in a fence? And if they're gonna spend all this money on the site plan and then we say they have to put a fence in, they'll have to do it again.
Exactly.
I mean, just do the fence. It'll save everybody so much.
Because if you come back before us without the fence, we're probably gonna ask for the fence anyway, so.
I'm guessing I, I wouldn't want headlights pouring into my house. So, you know, it just seems there's a lot of antagonism between these two neighbors and fences make good neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah, FYI, there's no lights shining on her house.
Nancy, but the, the, the main problem is that the site plan that you're presenting to us has to depict what you intend to do. So, so the fence kind of brought things up right here. So, and, and as Judy suggested, we need like some measurements in there and some suggested vegetation and what the plan is to have this screening.
All right, let's talk about one more thing.
John Lavelle has his hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to just continue this discussion simply the fact that we are not in the business of arbitrating between neighbors that have difference of opinion.
100 feet is a lot of fence. Can we negotiate that down? She doesn't, I mean, 100 feet is a lot of fence.
I didn't say 100 feet for the fence. I said, the distance from your, from your parking to the property line may well be the required 100 feet. But lights travel further than that and you are required not to allow light to spill into your neighbor's yard.
And if I may, this is Brian, Judy's correct. So, and if, if you don't believe that's to be accurate, then show us that in your next presentation. Because the only thing we know, please don't interrupt me. The only thing we know is what we were being told and we have no visual evidence. The only thing you're showing us is a handwritten, drawn sketch plan. So you need to do a better job on this and we can't spend any more time on this.
Stuart, I understand that. May I repeat my question? The fence wants to be 100 feet in length. I feel that's excessive, 100 feet in length.
So propose something else. Tell us why. Why is it excessive? Yeah. Please.
What is the length of this parking area? That's what the fence needs.
Twelve cars. I think it was 12.
It is in one, yeah, it should be about 25 feet. That would cover her house.
Yeah, it's not what the law says, Mrs. Adler. What the law says is you're not allowed to have light spill across your neighbor's property line.
They will not spill across the property line. 25 feet will do it.
Okay. So I'm asking the applicant, are you going to go with a site plan before us or do you want to pull it and do something else? Because we've got to move on and, and the issue's the fence. I mean, Judy's right, we can't have the light spilling across. There technically is enough space between the two places, but the planning board has the right to ask for screening.
Which is fair. I think Nancy understands that, but maybe.
Okay, but I just don't, I don't, you know, I don't see 100 feet of fence.
Well, let's, let's.
Stuart?
Stuart here, I have a question. How wide is, is the parking area from one end to the other? That, that's in question. Is it more than 25 feet?
Yes.
Twelve cars, whatever.
Way beyond that.
Yeah. So why is 100 feet or whatever the number is unreasonable?
We're not asking for 100 feet. 100 feet is the, is the, to the boundary. That doesn't mean that's what the fence needs to be. The fence needs to prevent light from cars pulling into parking, from spilling onto the neighbor's property, not just where her house is, onto her property.
I just think we're unsure maybe of how to, how to resolve it, right?
With whom?
All right, so then we'll go back to the drawing board. All right.
Okay. So Melissa, I gather that the applicant is reconsidering their, their, their presentation, is that?
Well, we're just not sure. I mean, even if we're gonna put a new, or Nancy's gonna put a new site plan in of, of what it has, has to be because if, if we're preparing to put in a fence or whatever the determination is, we do, we just don't know. So we need to know how much is, you know.
Okay, so the board just recommended that a fence is a good idea to avoid the light spillage of the parking lot into your neighbor's lawn. What you intend to do needs to be on the site plan for the planning board to view. Right now, your site plan is inaccurate for what you came here and told us what you wanted to do. So your choices are you can withdraw the application. You're still in violation with the building department. You can have a new site plan to represent what you intend to do and come back to the planning board. Overall, the planning board members are asking you to take into consideration a fence and vegetation as the buffer in between. Have it on your planning board very descriptively with measurements and details of what it is and what it's gonna be. Planning board nod, I'm right, right?
If I could make a point, it can't be done with vegetation. If it's evergreen and it doesn't grow so tall like white pines do, that after a while it isn't doing the job. There is certainly evergreen shrubbery that will do that and it doesn't have the same kind of maintenance, but you have to get it established and you have to water it until it is well-established. So it's not a free project, no matter which way you do it. How you do it, as long as it has the effect, is really up to you. But it has to have the effect of blocking the light from your neighbor's property.
All right, if we come back with, and we leave the 100-foot fence, and so what else do we have to do?
You are misunderstanding the point of 100 feet. 100 feet is the law as regards the distance from the parking to the property line. The length of the fence has to protect the property from light or the bushes or whatever you choose to put there that works.
If I come back and submit this. If I come back and submit this, and if I submit this application tonight, can you vote on it?
If you.
Site plan tonight, can you vote on it?
No.
Well, it needs to be done professionally, there has to be measurements on it. We need some sort of, some sort of.
What's wrong with it?
Okay, I motioned to close this discussion, we've had enough. Melissa, if.
Cleared up what, just tell me what I need to make this, to make you accept the.
Everybody has told you multiple times, ma'am, I just don't know, we don't know what else to say. Either you're not listening or I just go there.
Everything you say, if you could just sum it up, you know, sum it up in a nutshell.
You have to put screening between the parking spaces.
All of them, not just a hundred feet.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a hundred, but whatever it is.
A hundred feet on the plan is the distance from the parking spots.
That's right, that's not the fence length or the buffer length, that is the distance. And you seem to be on the distance, but you don't have those figures on the drawings, so we're only guessing.
You want, you want the figures on the drawing.
Yes.
It needs to be all laid out in specific detail, that's why you pay someone to do this, so it's all laid out.
Okay. All right, you good, Melissa?
Close, yes.
Okay, so the next case.
You know, wait a minute, just one more thing, you did not look closely, if you looked.
We've discussed this enough now, make up your mind, put a fence or not a fence and come before us and we'll vote. But right now, you can't make up your mind and we have another case, so we're going on to the other case.
All here, the numbers are on the site plan.
Okay, move on.
Okay, okay, our 6:50 PM case. Samantha, Samantha Yokorski and Hui Bu.
We.
Why?
We.
Why?
Yeah, this is.
Special use permit 22-665, this is the second sketch plan review of a specially used permit application to construct a dwelling located in the R3 and Scenic Overlay Zoning District at Route 212 in Woodstock. And this is basically, the two site reps had some questions and they sent in the information to answer those questions. So if I believe the two site reps have any questions, please ask them.
Sure, I'll start. Hello.
Yeah, James.
I was curious where you are locating your septic for this.
Okay, so if you see on the site plan, it should be notated, yep.
I think it's down here, isn't it?
Yeah, I made sure that it was placed below the scenic overlay, so the trees that were not cutting is not gonna affect that. I mean, I thought about putting it above the scenic overlay, but then we would have to take all these trees down.
Let me make sure I've got the scenic overlay layer turned on. Okay, so there's the scenic overlay recognizing that the, that the, the property lines are not necessarily correct. That's the way those maps are.
Yeah.
But there's the scenic overlay edge, and now I'll go back to your drawing, there's your drawing. And you're down there, that looks like it's okay.
Yeah, you can, you can see on a site plan, because this is.
It'd be around here.
Yeah, exactly. And if you look at the site plan, we notated the 1200 scenic overlay and that's from the USG topographic information that we got online, so.
Oh, sorry, wrong, wrong, wrong thing here. Yeah, I got to go back. I have this.
Bowie Planning Board.
Yep.
Came today.
Only I had it in the other person's name, shoot.
Just had.
Oh, it came today, right, so it's in downloads, right, okay. Here we go.
Perfect.
All right, so if we go down to this one, I see, yes, you've got, this thing just moved. Here we go. All right, so is that the 1200 line?
Yeah, that, that 1200, you can see the notation on the bottom right-hand corner.
I can't because I've got pictures of you all in the way. I see scenic overlay right there, it's this little dotted line here, which makes sense.
Yep.
I'm gonna make this a little bigger so that everybody can see it better.
Thank you.
Okay, that actually helps answer my other question in a way. At the cabin site itself, it's very obvious like the trees that have to come down mainly on the sides and even like one in the middle of it, I think. But right below the scenic overlay line is like another level of trees.
Mm-hmm.
And if those stay, that would be key.
Yeah, I mean.
To not open up the site to Willow and Sickler Road and all that.
Yeah, I mean, I like to keep as many trees down as I can, I mean, up as I can. I mean, I like to get your expertise about like, you know, with the storm, the ice storm that we had this year, am I putting my house in danger? If I keep certain trees up, there's that one pine that snapped.
I think you need to ask an arborist for that. But what we see here is a fair amount of evergreen. And then all of this kind of stripey looking stuff is the shadows of trees because they take these shots in the winter. So obviously we've got lots of trees. Protecting it against the ice storm, you're really, you need to talk to an arborist.
Fair enough.
Like, if you stand at the very edge of the cabin that's facing where there would be going downhill.
And that's this, right?
Yeah, right there. If you literally look and you look downward like one more level, like, you know, it's just like, almost like a, a very steep step. There's like more trees down there. And if those stayed, those protect, you know, the opening of that space completely. And I would imagine trees would fall downward, I mean, I guess they could fall upward.
That was, I was surprised with that one pine tree, it snapped back, I guess the.
Yeah, I guess it could, a wind could push it backward, yeah, but I don't know, I couldn't quite get a, I think an arborist would be smarter to give you a better.
Yeah.
Concept of.
I did get some consulting from Cat Skills Forest Association and they did recommend that one pine tree. I mean, I have, I have photographs when we get into the tree cutting, I did like do a tree survey, like an actual tree survey. If we go down to the next slide, but are we finished with the septic? Are you guys okay with where the septic is located?
Yeah, it's below the scenic overlay, so, you know.
So, yeah, I did.
Is this what you want, Mr. B?
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
So these are all the trees, obviously within the house, there's like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven trees that we need to take down and they're all pretty small.
You're talking the cabin, right?
Yeah, they're like six, eight, 18, that's a little bigger one, then there's eight, nine, 10 and nine, so they're all small trees. Then I did like a kind of a six-foot periphery of like, I mean, I like to keep some of them because we do love the woodsy feel, but like.
This is the house, right?
No, that's the septic.
No, no, this is the house, house.
That's the house, yeah, because the driveway is over here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So those are all trees you're indicating right there.
Exactly, and I measured each tree's diameter. So there's really no.
Majority of them were not very mature trees, they were.
Exactly.
They were smaller trees, a lot of them are really right up against your house and they obviously would have to come down. I don't think that will affect any scenic overlay because they, they seem shorter than a lot of the stuff that's in front of them even.
And there's that one tree, it's a beautiful oak tree, that's the only tree that's opaque. That's a beautiful oak tree that we really want to keep and it has a lot of full age, it's like, it's, it's a gorgeous tree.
What's the distance here?
Distance from what?
From the tree to the house.
Eleven feet.
Now, you may have some problems with branches breaking.
Well, you know, maybe we just trim, maybe we trim when the, the ones that are overhanging the house, maybe that.
I would recommend that.
Okay.
I mean, some of, some of the tree people around here, like I know Limber in the case of my house, they looked at how a tree was likely to fall as it fell and they trimmed it so that the weight would pull it away from the house.
Ooh, good idea. And the only other tree that is out of the range is that one and notated, it's 21 feet away, but it is a pine tree.
This one.
Yeah, on the bottom right-hand corner, that's, that's the only tree that like, it's kind of like, it could be a hazard. So I, I wonder if you guys are okay with that one going down. It's a pine tree, I know it's evergreen, so.
Yeah, that's a reason to keep it if you could. I don't know, I guess it's a matter of the safety of your house, you have to have a, an arborist tell you where it's likely to fall if it falls.
I mean, there, there is a, there's a tree 12 feet east of it that snapped back north and that kind of gave me like, whoa, okay. I just don't wanna, nobody wants to deal with a tree on the house.
James, this is Brian, do you have any more questions before I go?
I go ahead, Brian.
Okay, Judy, can you kindly bring the, the original map back up? Thank you very much, yeah, I appreciate it. And so, sir, so when I was up there, looking at this and I was thinking about Peter's comments and other meetings, I'm having a hard time imagining you not being, having to cut down probably 30 or 40 trees to, you know, have a safe perimeter around your dwelling. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I've been driving around Woodstock and, and people's relationships from trees to houses seem pretty close. And, you know, I picked this part of the site because there is, there's a lot of young, young saplings, there's not a lot of mature trees. Like behind, you were on the site and behind that site was all deciduous oak trees, so you wanted.
That is correct, that is correct.
Take, you know, if we're gonna take trees down, I thought the young saplings are, you know, kind of a kinder gesture.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I remember the first meeting, you know, there, you mentioned several. So it strikes me that, you know, and I think it was like three or four, I think it's gonna be a lot more than three and four personally. My second question is, are you planning any other dwell, or structure on this? Either a garage or another house or cabin or anything?
Yeah, he wrote a whole story about how they're gonna build another house and another studio building in the future.
The more we think about it, I, I think, because we do love the forest, it's so beautiful. And we have two lots, so, you know, maybe when, when our grandparents want to move up, we, we migrate down to the lower lot and build a bigger house. But if our grandparents move up, they can just take the cabin and we don't have to build anything else. We might build a workshop, a little art studio, and I found a little site that I wouldn't have to take any trees down. But my goal, you guys, like, I really don't want to take trees down. And even the way like the structural engineer designed it with like eight piers going into the land, so there's minimal disruption to, to the earth. And our art studio that we're gonna do too is definitely gonna be on piers as well. So it's just minimal disturbance below the surface. So a thousand square foot studio, that's the next thing, because I'm an artist, I need a workshop and I need a place to work. And we might build a, like a little cottage, like a 200 square foot cottage and we'll place it where there's no trees. So, yeah.
Let me ask the site reps the question, does this site look like it could be seen from, from, from anywhere else clearly?
Yeah, I think it, I, I mean, I don't have exact geography, but I, I feel like this side of the mountain is visible to Sickler Road and to parts of Willow on 212. It's more of a matter of, it's a very flat, large area up there.
Yeah.
There are, there are trees already down, but if they construct as far back as possible and leave as many trees on the forward side, they, they could probably get away with it.
Yeah, there, I mean, when I, I guess when I build the art studio, we're gonna go through this process again, right?
Yeah.
And.
And the one thing I wanted to sort of let you know is, we're in the process of strengthening a lot of these scenic overlay enforcements and coming up with, you know, possible new ways with drones or things like that, or balloons or, you know, just to try to get a visual of where the, where the scenic overlay would be harmed so that it would be, your house would be visible, you know, to major roads or major, you know, walking areas and things like that, neighbors. So that is, that is happening, and so I just thought you should be aware of that since you do have these plans for two more structures in the future. This cabin is very small, one side of it facing out is very, very narrow.
I mean, I oriented the house with a southern exposure with the least amount of frontage, knowing that this would be a concern for you guys. I've already pre-planned minimal disturbance to the scenic overlay, I hope you guys take that into consideration.
I do have a question. The only concern I have with the septic is that there is a stream or a wetland in somewhere around here. So you need to be careful, there's a hundred foot buffer on wetlands. I think you're okay, but you need somebody, you need somebody who's qualified to look at a hundred feet out.
I had Madam Balkers and Eggers come out and they're like, it's, it's all the way down on the first lot, but he's like, you guys are totally fine on, on this. They wouldn't even, they wouldn't allow that to happen with their engineering license, they wouldn't stamp these septic approvals. So even if I wanted to, I couldn't do it.
Yeah, he, he's been approved for his septic space, we, we got that information.
Okay, just wanted to raise it, thank you.
And just a note to the planning board in general, when we ask for these plans, which he's already done, but in the future, we usually as servers ask for the limits of clearing to be shown on the plan. So it actually has a dotted line that's called the limits of clearing. And so that you know, if you go back in a year or two, you can tell whether they stayed within that limits because it's, it's demarked on the plan. But that's okay in this case.
Okay, thank you.
You've already got it done. Any other members of the board have questions to the applicant?
I have one final comment if I may, so I, and this is my personal opinion, the challenge that the planning board has, as we all know, is, is Peter is correct. We are strengthening the, the rules and regulations in this area. And everybody, and it strikes me that you're very conscientious about what you're doing, that everybody comes to, comes to us with the, the minimum thing they're going to do. And I'm still remembering back to the first conversation where there was just gonna be a few trees. There's no way, in, in my opinion, having owned property and spent some time thinking about these things, that you're gonna be able to do this without taking down at least 20 trees and it doesn't matter if they're young or old. In this instance, and then you're gonna move forward and you're going to want to do more, you're not gonna want to do less as you build. And so what the planning board has to do is we have to figure out how to manage this under the constraints and limitations that everybody wants to build and they want to manage their own property their own way. But there's gonna be, if you build what you say are gonna build, you're gonna do, you're gonna, in my opinion, you're gonna take down at least 100 trees.
Yeah, I would, I would probably agree with that. But before us is the question to approve the site plan. So are the, are there any board members that want to add anything to the site plan before it's approved? I mean, as I said, we don't have the limits of clearing, we don't know which of these trees he's shown are gonna come down. But I agree with Brian that it's gonna be more than three or four. So, anyway, anybody on the board have any questions or reservations? Or are we ready to go ahead and approve the site plan?
I guess I have a question. As this drawing shows trees, is that pretty much all the trees?
No, there's way more trees.
Yeah, I would have thought, I would have thought. So why did you choose to show the ones that you chose?
I think the ones that you see here are more like the significant trees.
Yeah.
If you actually go down to the next image, I did do like a little, there's a photograph.
Yeah, I saw that. Looks like Aspen.
It's then the next photo, take a look at that one as well. That'd be a better angle.
Yeah. Now, is this the house site?
And then that's the house site.
Oh, I see the layout of those.
And you know what? Like this house is nimble. It it's supposed to be in the woods. We like it nestled, so it it is gonna be a challenge to keep as many trees as we can. And, you know, the eight piers that we're designing, it's gonna have minimal impact on the roots. Because usually when you lay like a foundation, like a concrete foundation, the roots get disturbed and the trees around it start dying.
But but realistically, you've got four right on the footprint. And you've probably got at least another eight or ten that you're gonna have to take down just because they're too close. But it's a pretty wooded site. That's very obvious.
Yeah, it's it's so wooded. I mean, some forest management have recommended to thin some out.
And they would recommend thinning the young ones. You've got mostly young ones right around it. I'm satisfied. I mean, I think you're gonna, these over here and over here are the ones you're probably gonna have to lose some of them.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna keep that oak. That's for sure. And the young pine, yeah, just a couple of young pines.
Well, so the question now is, do we accept the plan as as presented?
Question, Peter?
Yep, go ahead.
Is this matter on for a site plan review or for approval of a special use permit?
Special use permit for a house in the scenic overlay.
And it's a special use permit. Don't we have to do a public hearing?
It will have to go to a public hearing, correct? But I'm just saying, do we accept the site plan? I'm asking if we accept the site plan before we, are we ready for a public hearing?
Can I ask one question, though? We're actually only approving the cabin, right?
Right, just the cabin.
Okay, make sure that's clear.
The cabin, the driveway and the septic system.
The septic system goes hand in hand and has been approved by all the counties.
The location of the driveway is part of the plant.
The driveway was already.
Driveway's already there. It's the only way I got up there.
That Stuart, Stuart has another question, Peter. I I just want to be careful that if we say we're approving something, it, you know, that that has a layman's connotation that is different from our process. Isn't it our job to determine whether the plan is complete so that it can go to a public hearing? Because we didn't really actually approve an application until after the public hearing. And so, you know, we could say we're okay with A element, A element, B element, C, whatever. Whether it's a cabin, whatever you're talking about. But and then say that it's complete and go to a public hearing. But I'm really nervous about saying we're approving.
You're absolutely right. We're not approving it. We're just, are we accepting this site plan is good enough to go to a public hearing? Are we ready? Is the planning board good enough with it?
I guess my question is, how much difficulty for the applicant would it be to show the areas that are gonna be cleared? Since that is normally a part of such a plan.
Yeah, that's what I call the limits of clearing, where they actually put a line around where clearing is gonna be.
Peter, do you think that should be on the plan?
That's what I'm asking.
I think definitely in the future, we need to ask all scenic overlay applications. We didn't in this case. So it's up to you guys if you you want to ask for it or not. We will in the future should always ask for the limits of clearing.
Now, how much of a hardship would it be for him to go back to, you know, Barry Medebeck and put the line on wherever it's gonna be?
Yeah, he'd just have to draw the line where they think it's gonna be cleared. And then, you know, then we know the area.
I think it's a good idea.
Is the applicant okay with that?
I mean, I did do the plan with all the trees that I'm cutting down, and I also provided you two photos highlighting the tree that I needed to take down.
Where the, what you're saying on here, you're showing what trees you're taking down? Or was it on a different page?
On the different page. Look at the other, go down further. That one. Is that good enough for you guys? Or do you want me to transpose that into the main?
Is that all of them?
Um, that's, that's what I like to minimize, because minimize cutting. I mean.
Okay, so you're planning to do the ones that are on this part?
Okay.
That seems to me to do it.
That satisfy the planning board? Or would you like something else on that?
And I have that Photoshop, I have that Photoshop, I made those photographs too with the highlighted trees. Thought that was pretty clear.
Oh, that's that's why they're yellow? Oh, I didn't understand. That's what I was looking at.
My, 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 my failure to communicate.
That's very clever. I like that.
Yeah, that's good.
You really understand, like.
Planning board, does that satisfy your need for?
Okay.
I'm good with it. We can.
I'll defer to the chair on that question. I'm okay with Peter's view on that.
So Melissa, you want to set them up for a public hearing?
Hugh, this is the deal. I'm not sure if we're going back to in person or hybrid meetings or what. So until I figure that out, I can't really schedule you for a public hearing because I have to take an ad out in the paper and I have to know exactly what we're doing. The plan is we will schedule you for a public hearing. I have like a Zoom meeting with Governor Hochul's office on the June seventh. So I'm hoping for some clarity then to see what we're doing, and then I'll schedule you as soon as I can for a public hearing in which your neighbors are notified. And it's just if anyone has any concerns, they can come and address them. It's part of the process.
And it can be on Zoom, right? It's just a matter, we don't know what it is yet.
We have no idea what we're expected to do in the next meeting. Yes.
And the town board hasn't yet passed the law that Bill has put forward, so that has to happen.
And that seemed to me to be more hybrid and we were there and the door was open, so I I'm not quite sure. Yes, yeah. I I need a little bit more information to execute a public hearing than what I have right now. So Hugh, I'll be in touch as soon as I can, and then we'll get this scheduled, okay? It just, it takes time because it's it's a lengthy process. It has to go in the paper ten days before, five days before, and all that.
So what do you expect as a date for this public hearing? Just just a general idea so I can plan a little bit.
Hopefully July, end of July. All right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
We have under discussion the Housing Oversight Task Force zoning amendments, which there was quite a bit of paperwork to it, but there was a summary. Four or five page summary. That's being proposed. I don't know if everybody's got a chance to read it. It's pretty interesting. It reflects stuff that the planning board's been talking about for the last fifteen, twenty years. And there's some really good stuff in it, the conservation subdivisions. There's a lot in it about major subdivision. And and how to approach it. I think one of the main issues that has been clarified is that once we created the Wetlands Water Course Law, we were basically saying that anything that's in the wetlands is is not buildable. And therefore is not considered as part of your amount that you can develop. And it's pretty interesting that the task force has come up with the same conclusion is that like if you took fam acres, if you took out all the wetlands and whatever is left, that is all you've got to work with. And that's a, that's a big step forward. The other thing in it they mentioned is creating smaller lots. Which I'm not sure, we've struggled for that forever. We've always wanted to be able to create some smaller lots, but zoning doesn't permit us to do that.
It will now.
All right, somehow.
Can I make a suggestion, Peter? There are summary documents and there's a PowerPoint, all of which are very informative about the essential direction and purposes and somewhat about the methodology. But we are the people, the building department a little less so, and zoning appeals board a little less so. We are really the people who are gonna have to apply this. So I hope people will actually read the draft law. You can see where changes have been made because they're highlighted. There's a bunch of things that looks like they've been removed, but what has actually happened is they're housing related and they all got put down into a housing section. They're not gone. But if you if you read it with as much attention as you can, and I know it's hard, it's really my eyes glaze over kind of stuff. You you will see, I hope, if there are areas that are gonna be a problem in practice, that you will spot them and give us feedback, because there will be a second draft. I did a lot of reading, looking for language that wasn't very clear. And I provided a revision, which some of it got in, but a lot of it I think didn't. I have to actually read the two documents against each other to see if some of the clarifications I thought were necessary got into the draft you're gonna see. But anything that you think doesn't make sense or won't work or isn't clear, we need to know because there will be a revision. And that's what we have the thirty days for, is for you to give feedback to the committee on which I am a member.
Well, Judy, one thing that comes to mind, I know we've talked about it quite a bit, and it's suggested in here that in the sub big subdivisions, that there is a building envelope. In other words, an area where you can only build.
And that's not just for the major subdivisions. That's in other places as well, where we can say, this is an area you are approved to build. Now, it doesn't mean they couldn't build somewhere else, maybe. But we've identified a place where they can, and if they're gonna go anywhere else, they're gonna have to come back for it.
All right, just it's gonna be difficult, as you can imagine, because who is going to be monitoring whether they are within this envelope, which is more or less, it's not in the field, it's on a piece of paper. So that that'll be an interesting one.
As you have often said, Peter, our job is not enforcement.
No, but I see there's a lot of good stuff in here. I don't know if other members of the board have questions about.
What what my thought is, guys, I I know this is hefty, this is a large email, it has lots of components, but like Judy said, they're they're really looking for our input on this. So what I'd like to do is schedule in the next two weeks, if you guys could look through this, get out your old pencil, highlighter, make some notes. Come back to me. I could formulate something and then we can discuss on, we can discuss it at the next meeting. I'll set aside time.
And you don't have to print out three hundred pages, just the pages where there are changes, if you want to do them on paper.
Yes.
You can do it in Word.
We can, we can formulate something together at the next meeting and have it to go to Supervisor McKenna and the Town Board and the Housing Task Site, Task Site over there. With our opinions. And I think it would be wise, I think, they've done a fabulous job and they've spent on, you know, credited hours in doing all this, and I think we should take the time to read it. I'm planning on it.
I have a technical question, Judy, which is this is, how long do you think this gets put into our code book?
It has to, it has to have a public hearing. And it has to go to the county before it goes to the state. So I don't know exactly what the timeframe is, but we've got thirty days to respond to the first draft, and then the Housing Oversight Task Force is gonna work hammer and tongs to deal with whatever comments we get. I think by the fall, it ought to be at the county, if not before that.
Okay, because one thing that comes to mind, a lot mentioned in the in the summary is talking about major subdivisions, issues to deal with major subdivisions. We've only had one major subdivision before us in the last ten years, and it's still before us. And the question I have is, is any, can any of this be applicable to?
Yes. Yes. First of all, a minor subdivision can be done that way. Second of all, if somebody has a big piece of land and they slice off a little piece of it, and then two years later, they slice off another little piece of it, we are requiring all of that stuff to be on the plat such that when it gets to five pieces, it is now a major subdivision, even if they started doing it ten years before they finished.
So I guess the question is, can we hold off on major subdivisions until this is completed?
I think that would actually be a very good idea if we can do it. We only have the one right now.
We only have one. I mean, there's a couple others down the pipeline. I don't know when they're gonna come before us, but you know, like the wall reaches a five hundred acre.
Could suggest to that landowner to use the language that the law will have in it. And see where they are, because I think I think you and I already know that the number of house lots that can be put on that land is considerably smaller. But here's an important point. What we are saying is, in a major subdivision, at least fifty percent has to be retained as open land, contiguous open land.
And that's after you take out all the wetlands first.
Well, now, wait, wait, wait. Let me finish what I'm saying. If you have wetlands and steep slopes and things like that, they can be part of that open contiguous land. So you subtract all of that, and what you have left that is buildable, you can have the number of houses that would be allowed if that was the size of the lot. So if you're in an R five and what you have left is five acres, that's buildable out of twenty, let's say. I'm sorry, you've got five acres, that's all you can have. But if you had ten acres, you could have one of those be a two acre lot and affordable, and the and the other one be an eight. It's flexible within the limits of what's buildable and permitted density under the zoning.
Deb, Deb Dewan had her hand up, and she's she's been one on these committees, so I think we should.
Yeah, so I'm, thank you.
Did I make a mistake?
No, you did great. And I'm not, I'm gonna defer to you, Judith, because you've, you know. So I just want to say Judith has been in the weeb's with this material for ten months and is very conversant in how it can work. We really welcome your questions and your input and also the the opportunity to actually have a discussion with you. It's only been a couple of days since we presented to the town board. So, you know, we want you to digest it and integrate it, and I think Melissa gave a very good sort of outline of how best to approach it in terms of looking at the overview documents, looking at our PowerPoint, before you get into the zoning and and subdivision code itself, but also to tell you that there is this annotated table of contents that will take you directly from the table of contents to the pages where there are specific changes and additions.
You do not need to read the whole law.
Correct.
Honestly, you don't. About the kind of materials that can be used to pave a road, you don't need to look at.
Right, so we did this with you guys in mind, literally. We thought about the planning board almost like the beginning, the middle and the end. Because you're the ones who are really on the front line with this. So we wanted, and that's why your input and our discussion with you is really important. So however Melissa can organize that, Kirk and or myself will be available. Our consultant, if that's helpful, to be available to make sure that we've really, you know, that it's gonna so that you can recognize some of these things are new, as you've identified, Peter. But we think that they are state of the art, they're really good for the environment, they're good for housing, and we think we've accommodated things in a really balanced way that will be helpful for the applicants that come before you. And then what is adopted at the time when their application is considered complete is, I believe, what is in effect. So in other words, when you deem their applicant application complete, whatever zoning is in effect at that time is what is applied. So it is good, as Judith suggests, that they look at what's being proposed. And we don't know at the end of the day how much of this may change when we get to get everybody's feedback from you and the ZBA and the 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 building department and the Environmental Commission, but that's where we are. And so hopefully by the fall, we'll have a very clear sort of focus as to where we're going with this.
Thank you, Deborah. This is Brian. I'm sorry, Peter. Judith, did you say that there was, this is three hundred pages?
No, the whole, the whole law is three hundred pages. What you have to read is way less than three hundred pages. That's why you want to use the annotated table of contents to aim you at what you need to look at.
Okay, my question is, and thank you for clarification on that. I'm sorry I didn't raise my. Okay, my question is, and thank you for clarification on that, and I'm sorry I didn't raise my hand with the Zoom function. Um, is there an executive summary on this?
There are several executive summaries, and I'm recommending that you look at them first.
Okay, thank you.
There's a PowerPoint, there's a kind of table that shows what things are and why. There is an annotated table of contents, and there's another document that I'm not quite sure, it's kind of a summary.
It's a summary, it's enumerated summary of everything that's been changed or, or proposed.
And that's what's 300 pages, isn't it?
Yes.
I see, uh, Stuart had his hand up there. I think that's a hand signal.
Yeah, actually, it was a clap for the, uh, executive summaries. Great.
I think there's, um, there's, if you guys didn't go to the meeting too, I think that was really informative, and there is a recording on that. I think that might be a great place to start.
Yes.
The planning board is kinda watch the meeting that they presented, and then dive into, and get out your highlighter.
That was a special meeting of the planning, of the Town Board.
Yeah, can I just say one more thing? We were extremely fortunate to have Nan Stoltenberg as our professional planner. She presented to the planning board the, like, the nuts and bolts of what we're proposing. Um, she's worked with 70, 7O communities in the Catskills, uh, and upstate New York. She's very conversant on all these things, and I think her presentation to the Town Board was really excellent.
Okay, so we're gonna go with Melissa's, uh, plan, how we deal with this.
But don't try to do it all at one sitting.
All right, well, that's up to Melissa, if she can fit it in one.
No, no, I don't mean that. I mean my colleagues, as you're reading. Don't try to do it all in one sitting. You would stay asleep.
Write off a little bit every other night.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good, excellent, excellent work.
Again, let me know, but I can redirect you to the emails that you all did get it, so.
If anybody has a question, and they say, I don't understand what this means, call me.
Okay, all right, good, good. All right, next, um, we have this amendment to Chapter 260 for the Light Industrial District, in which they're going to permit libraries. What do you all think about that? Go ahead.
I have a concern. I think having it be by right for a public library is yielding a point that I don't know that the town ought to yield, as to what the town has a right to rule on and what it doesn't. That's just my opinion.
You mean whether they can make those changes unilaterally?
It's, the, the, the list of, you know, SPX, whatever, says that in the light industrial zone, a public library is a P, and any other kind of a library, I think, is, is that you can't do it. And I have some concerns about that. I just saw Stuart.
Stuart, yeah?
Yeah, well, actually, uh, raises a question in my mind. I wanna get this scheduled up in front of me, like, on the other screen, but it also, uh, talked about allowing a public library, um, in residential zones as well. Um, is that currently the case, or is that something new? Do we know?
As far as I know, it was just in the light industrial, was the only, maybe I missed something.
That was the only change you made, Peter?
I thought that's what I saw.
Let me get it up on my other computer, so I can find it.
I think that is what I saw.
Sorry.
To, to me, it looks like...
Look at the local logo.
Only one that has an X is FW.
Right.
And then the cultural facility is the LISLI, but all the other ones are permitted or special permitted. So they would have to go through the filter permit or US. But a library in this instance, and for this purpose...
Well, I think there's a problem with the way it printed out, because it's showing SPs, it's all sort of moved to the right. And the X is down below, so it looks like a floodway is permitted, which isn't, can't be possibly what they mean.
Floodway is not permitted. I'm looking at it right now, I printed it.
Well, maybe it's because I, maybe it's because I've got it on an iPad, but...
Maybe, yeah, floodway is not permitted, and, um, in either or.
It looks like it's, um, it has a P under, uh, residential and handler commercial, and then the, uh, four residential districts that are all special use permit, as well as the MC is special use permit. So floodway is an X, and the, uh, light industrial is P, so as of right, yeah.
But I, I agree with Judy's original comment, that, can the board just make sure, like, for, like, for anything? Say, oh, we, we don't have, we, you know, can we just change the, to meet anything we want? I don't know. I mean, this is the library, what if it's, uh, something else, and it's not permitted? And they say, oh, we'll just change it and make it permitted? Well, can they do that? I don't know.
I have another, uh, observation, okay? And that is, um, if you make it permitted, I think Judy's right, then it's as of right, then they don't have to come before us for an SUP review, or get into environmental questions, or traffic, uh, concerns, uh, neighborhood safety, and so on, you know?
They're claiming that they don't have to now, but this sort of gives it to the...
I don't agree with that.
Further discussion, and I don't need...
Well, my, my view is that it should be an SUP, um, in the light industrial, which means it's allowed, but you gotta get approval, because there may be particularly, you know, they could buy a parcel and inflict, uh, higher, uh, traffic on a particular neighborhood, or residents that live there, and they're completely out of the process unless they have someplace to come. And that's traditionally been the planning board. So, um, that's, it's just an observation at this point.
This is Brian.
They, sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Do you want to finish, Judy?
Well, they've been claiming that they don't have, the library has been claiming that they don't have to ask permission. I don't wanna yield that unilaterally.
And I don't agree with that, as a proposition.
Well, exactly.
So I get asked frequently, uh, how I feel about the library being exempt from the, the rules and regulations, including the SUP, um, you know, that, with the planning board, and how do I feel about that? And I say, I think it's much of BS. And so I, I just think that, I think this is problematic. And I wish we could do something about it, but I don't know what we could do.
Well, we can give our opinion, and then build what they wanna do.
I think it should be an SUP. I'm curious what John and the other board members think.
What do you think, John?
Concur.
Yeah, me too. James, what do you feel on that?
I'm muted, James.
I didn't hear the comment.
Ames?
I'd probably come at this in a very different way from you guys, just because I'm, I'm a, just out front. I'm a very large supporter of the library having this happen. So, you know, I don't wanna harm anything for the future, for other things. Obviously, I want the language to be right, but, um, I'm a pretty big supporter of this happening to the library.
It has to be clear, I am too, but it has to be right.
Right, so that's, I just wanted to put that out there, that however we could, you know, do this right, so we don't have issues later, that's, of course, very important, but, uh, um, you know, I, I'm not the one to get into the technical details of all that, to know what that language should be.
Could I make another comment, please? Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, I remember when, when they asked for a waiver the first time, when the bond was being voted on, and we granted it, um, with reservation, because quite frankly, we didn't think that they had enough time to pass the bond. And so we thought, well, at least I did, like, okay, let them try anyway, uh, but I think things have changed. So that's my...
All right, can I ask Brian a question?
Sure.
Are you referring to, uh, the last time the library was before us, when they were, uh, looking to renovate, or get a bond to renovate the building that they personally occupy? Yeah, we didn't waive our jurisdiction. The, the fight was over who would be the lead agency on the environmental review, and, um, we worked out an, an agreement by which, um, we, we agreed to let the library, we waived any objections to the library serving as the lead agency on the environmental process, along as we were, uh, party to it. Uh, but they were before us voluntarily on, on their plans, and then when they didn't get the bond, that, that ended, you know, their application before us, but they did come before us, um, to review it.
Then I'll, I'll modify that.
And, um, in terms of James's point, I, 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 I'm not opposed to the new library, uh, uh, going forward, but I, I do have concerns about the public being taken out of the planning review process that we traditionally do. And, because it gives them a good forum to, uh, to voice their concerns, whether it's traffic or whatever. And, um, uh, I don't agree with the library's, uh, position that because they have the power to tax, that they're automatically exempt from, from planning board review under our law.
John has his hand up.
Well, I, I believe, I believe Stuart, uh, you put me onto that piece that was issued by the State of New York. And if you read it, and I really would advise everyone to read it, I think there's really serious doubt that the library was on a good legal footing, saying that they were exempt. It was questionable, very questionable, on whether or not they were exempt from any kind of review, but no one was, really cared to push it at the time.
You're talking about the last, the last time they were before us?
Well, even now.
Right, well, last time, um, uh, they came before us voluntarily.
No, 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 you, you are correct. They were voluntary at one point. And then when things started to swing, they became involuntary.
Right.
And that's really what was occurring, and that was the part I objected to.
That's what I'm remembering too, uh...
Yeah, well, just, they, it, it's kind of like, if it's not going my way, well, forget about it, we'll cut the planning board out. Or we don't want questions being asked that we don't want being asked. It's, it was a very difficult situation, and, and I think it was very marginal on their side as far as whether or not they had the right to do that.
Does Judy?
Stuart, can you share the document that John is talking about, because I don't remember seeing it, and I'd certainly like to.
I'm glad to, if you can maybe refresh me offline as to which document it was, um, because I'm not remembering right now.
You wanna send it to me, maybe send it to all of us, John?
Um, yes, I, I believe I can, certainly. I have a hard copy that I printed out for myself, because I actually did read it.
I read it.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I just would have to go back to, refresh myself on what it is that I sent you, but sure.
You know, you have a situation...
You can send it to me, then I'll remember what it was.
We have another situation with Kingston, owning property in the town of Woodstock. So that's, that's one issue. The library is a little bit different, and I too, as James said, support a library in general. It's a valuable part of the community.
Yep.
But abuse by a couple of members of its board of directors is not acceptable.
And the fact that there are people in town who will oppose it on all grounds, anytime, every time, doesn't mean we are on their side, that side of the argument, if we ask things to be done correctly.
That is correct, 100%.
Yeah. So where are we on the, uh, response to, um, um, they asked us for comment on, on the proposed change, right? Um, do we have a consensus, or do we wanna deal with it next time?
Well, we can take a, a poll of the board now, uh, and then Melissa can send the Town Board our position.
I have a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we've replied to the Town Board that we are not in favor of a P in that area for a public library, and SUP would be appropriate.
I'd second that. You're talking about the light industrial district?
The light industrial district.
Yeah.
John?
I agree.
Okay, James?
So that means the library's still to move forward with what they're doing?
Yep, just that they would have to have a special use permit.
They have to come in front of the planning board.
And not that we'll get our way.
Okay, so that would be in a public hearing with all the people who are so vehemently against the library, and they're all gonna be screaming and shouting at us?
Well, depends on how you run the hearing.
Well, I just mean, anytime you mention the library, that's what happens.
But why should we give up our jurisdiction? Because there are some people who are vocal on a particular...
I'm just saying, that's gonna happen.
Well, we could be prepared.
The, the fact that it's going to happen is irrelevant. It truly is irrelevant, because it needs to be, because the process needs to be. I have chaired many meetings where there was both sides there, and they knew, some people in the audience certainly knew which side I was on, but you have to have the meeting, you have to have that discourse.
Okay, so Brian? We're going back to Judy's motion.
I'm in favor.
I assume Stuart seconded it, since he was the first one to say yes.
He did second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
James, do you wanna go with?
I'm not, I don't wanna vote on it.
Then you're upstanding, you have a right.
I'm upstanding.
Totally, you're right. All right, so we, but it carries. So I will work up, uh, a memo to send, and this is what our request is. Like Peter said, doesn't mean that it's gonna carry any weight.
Melissa, if you could please circulate that before it goes out.
As long as you all look at your email, I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thanks, Melissa.
So, unfinished business. We need to make a motion regarding the draft resolution for the Beresville Center. And this is a little difficult, because, um, before this was a site plan, which we've talked about approving, and we've all agreed that we can't approve anything to do with sound, because there's a law that covers that. And Stuart brought up the point, and it's in the code, that all amplified music is supposed to be indoor, as what the code says. So I think we've done the right thing in our suggestion that, um, the Town Board, or the town, whether it be the Building Department or the town itself, is the one to agree to these events. Because I, I, Stuart's point is well-taken, that we're kind of agreeing to something that's not the goal.
Oh, Peter, can I speak to this?
Sure.
Um, first of all, um, we didn't all agree that, um, uh, we can't deal with sound. It's just, it was, I dissented, and, um, I referred to certain standards that are in the code, which the majority of the board didn't wanna address. And, um, I also referred to the standard that's in the code requiring, uh, um, amplified sound be within a structure. I mean, that language is in the code, and Judy agreed that it's clear language. I think that the majority of the board was trying to get to a reasoned resolution, so that the case can be brought to a close. But, um, you know, candidly, we didn't hold a public hearing, and, and, um, uh, I think that was an oversight on all of our parts, because this, unlike site plan review, this is a, a special use permit application, which under the code requires a, a public hearing before we take action. And so I think that was, uh, an oversight that, that needs to be dealt with in some way. And I think we can correct it, uh, and hold a public hearing and so on. I'm, but I'm concerned about the process, and also the subject matter on which we were dealing is a, a matter of, uh, large public concern in the town. We had a lot of communications about changes in the town, and, and, uh, speakers in the business did, I mean, amplified speakers, not human speakers, but, um, you know, amplified sound and, and where this is all going. And, um, um, to not hold a public hearing on this application seems to me to be, uh, an error on our part, and so, uh, my proposal would be to, um, withdraw the approval that we made at the last meeting, pending the holding of a public hearing, and, and then hold the, the vote in abeyance until after we've heard from the public. And I, I would make that motion, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
Board members, how do you feel to Stuart's suggestion?
I think the law is fairly clear. I think the law is fairly clear. I'm a, I'm a matter of public hearing, I think the law is fairly clear. I also think as we look at, I'm thinking more about the colony, but the same thing applies, all of the pros and cons. But the pro music side of things. Keeps pretending that there's no law about this. If they don't like the law, if they want there to be more music, they have to deal with the town board about that. It's not something we have any authority over.
And I'm not anti-music, as you know.
And neither am I.
So I think it's, it might be a little bit of a misnomer to say the pro music people, anti-music people are really talking about. Outdoor amplified sound. That's really what it is.
This is Brian, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did I miss something? And the answer is probably yes, but. We've had these discussions for, well, for me, for three years. Has the code always been there and we just. Ignored it or just didn't bring it up or?
Well, Brian, the the couple of issues, one of them is that there's many venues in town that are. Have amplified sound. And if we go by the letter of law, none of it should be permitted. And that's just using the word amplified sound. And as the other part of this code, which is the sound noise ordinance. Which is, which is Liz pointed out at the last meeting. The decibel level that the town set for the light industrial or for the neighborhood commercial. Is less than speaking voice, is less than traffic, is less than, so. You got a problem with the code as it's written, the decibel levels as it's written. I mean, everybody would be over that level everywhere. So, but that's not our issue. Our issue is, and is Stuart brought up, we didn't hold a public hearing, and it is a special use permit. So I believe Melissa had an idea, I think it goes along with Stuart's idea. Is that correct, Melissa?
What's the idea?
Well, I initially kind of took this as, and we have solar panels in front of us. We waive the public hearing because it's environmentally friendly. What was presented to us by Bearsville Center was a section of dates. Um, it wasn't like, it was different from Colony. Colony was a site plan review, this is a special use permit. Basically, yes, Stuart, I totally agree, it should have a public hearing, and that's your call. But this wasn't for open-ended, this is like five events, five weekends, and and. They have to go to supervisor McKenna's office for every event and be permitted. For it as you guys did request, and they're fully aware, they have figured out what they need to do for that and are working on that. So my worry is if we schedule a public hearing, half their events are going to be over. That's my worry.
I know.
Well, again, as I mentioned.
Your call, that's, that's my worry, just as shifting the paper, um.
I I agree, but I also, as I mentioned before, you know, in both of these venues, in both of these cases. It kind of waited a little late to come before us, knowing how long this process takes. And if you want to open on June 1st or whatever it is, yes, Stuart?
Well, Peter, can I ask a question? Because I don't really know the answer to this as a practical matter. These um, special event permits, is that's what they're called, that the police dispatch issues or what I'm told about?
Apparently not, apparently not.
Because my question was. Apparently, you're saying they don't issue them?
There, there's a little confusion. There, there is what they call a mass gathering, which is over 300 people. That, I believe, goes through the police department.
Yeah.
But these event things is up to the building department.
But can the building department issue an approval of that independent of whatever we do? I mean, couldn't the applicant just go to the building department and ask for the mass, the event? I don't want to say mass event, but whatever it is that they approved, why do they need us for that?
Lizzie, Lizzie might have some good information. She, she has her hand up. She, they, they did require, they did. They did get this permit for last weekend um, that you had asked them to get. Lizzie. I, Peter, is it okay if she talks? I think it might shed some light on what we have to do and with the validity of how she obtained this permit.
Peter, you want to recognize her?
Yeah, go ahead, Liz. Thank you. And I just, well, just making the very broad point that we were told. That we had to get a special use permit to have the event, so we applied, and then we came before you. This, this group of people because that's what we were told to do, and. I don't understand now why you're saying that that wasn't appropriate and we needed to have done something else, so. Somewhere along the line, something's getting lost, and I know it's confusing, because it's confusing me and it's probably confusing you too. And but anyway, the fact that you did give us a a general go-ahead. Meant that the festival that we had last weekend, the Bluegrass Festival. Uh, on Memorial Day weekend, which was one of the five, went ahead because we. Asked the town, the the building department, and then it was Bill McKenna that gave us the permit, so that process worked. We put our decibel meters in place in all four corners and recorded them, and. I I'm still trying to analyze the data myself, but I'm very happy to share it. We didn't go above 70 decibels. And we had um, emails from neighbors saying that they were really pleased that they couldn't hear anything, so. I guess something's working and, you know, that we're all talking about this. I just need clarity about what we're supposed to do. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very confusing area, and if it shouldn't, if we shouldn't be talking about it, please tell me where I should be talking about it.
Uh, well, Lizzie, this is Stuart Lepkin again. Um, I'm glad to have that information. It's useful to us and to me. You didn't do the wrong thing by coming to the planning board. It was our oversight and not holding a public hearing. Before taking our vote, so it's not that you did something wrong, it's just that we skipped over a step that the law. Tells us we have to do, and that is an important step in our process. Um, so I wanted to answer you on that, that question.
Thank you.
And uh, this is. I'm sorry, Peter, go ahead.
Judy had her hand up, but then uh.
Okay, I think, I think there are two different issues here. One is that what sounds like an absolutely flat, you can't do it thing about amplified sound, which. I guess I think is unreasonable, but there it is. The other is that Lizzie has observed, as well as she can figure out how to do it, the limits on what crosses the property line. There is some basic physics involved here. The fact that somebody's speaking at 70 decibels 10 feet away from you. Doesn't mean that 100 feet away from you is going to be at 100, at 50 decibels or 7 decibels. Whatever it is at the boundary clearly ought to control. And it's not, I'm not afraid to find out that because my voice right now is at 70 decibels, that. Something that happens 100 feet away is going to be at 70 decibels. It isn't. It drops off with distance. And that's why people even need amplification. I think the town board needs to do something about that law if we want to have the kind of. Events within the town that I think everybody does support. And it is a separate question when it's four or five special events as opposed to every day or every weekend.
Right, it's actually a good trial period to see how it goes, you know, for us. We'll have more data at the end of it.
I want, I want to recognize Claire Keith for her letter, which really, you know, I felt like my hand got slapped, and I. Out to the other members of the board. You're right, Claire. We didn't think this all the way through. But I think I'm saying right now that when it comes to what Bearsville is proposing to do. If the supervisor is willing to give them an event permit. I think he probably has the power to do that, but the town board ought to take care of this question because the current law is. Unenforceable, and it isn't being enforced.
Right, and 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 the point is, it's that this, the sentence where it says all. Amplified music has to be indoors, has to be, has to be changed.
Refined and made more um, realistic about what works and what doesn't work. And the kinds of things that Lizzie and for that matter, the colony are trying to do. There are new technologies since that law was passed.
So to fix the the situation we're in, as Stuart said, um. Why doesn't Liz just go ahead and get her permits from the town for her remaining four or five things and leave us out of it?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, the reason we want to be left out is because of this, the mistake in the law. It 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 doesn't give us a chance to say yes or no.
I agree.
I, I feel like the draft resolution too, that, that, that you guys got. Kind of does that. You know, like, we, we, we acknowledged it as a site plan, as a referral from the CEO, and requested her to go and get the permits. Just a thought.
But it also waives the public hearing, which is a concern.
It does.
We didn't vote to waive the public hearing, and I don't know, we should do that.
Let me ask a question. Is the public hearing for the specific purpose of the events?
It's for the, it's on, it's, it's on the application that's before us, and the application is for a special use permit for these five dates.
But I don't think we can issue a special use permit.
I, I'm agreeing with that.
I think the town can, can give them that permit.
I agree. And if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we have a public hearing?
Not on this.
Not on this.
We did on the site plan, we did on the site plan.
Right.
But not on this event uh.
Right.
Issue.
This SUP is attached to the site plan that you guys did approve last year.
Yeah, so Peter, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is, do you, is it your view that um, special use permit is not appropriate for um. Approving five performance states? Did I hear you correctly? What's your thought on that?
I think.
I'm not trying to put words in that, just want to understand.
I think it solves the issue if the town gives the permit for this event. Until the law's changed, i- if the law doesn't, if the law didn't say that you can't do it outside of the building, then I would be fine with it, but. I don't see how we can give a special use permit for something that the code says can't be done. It's a, I agree, the code is, is out of date, but.
We, we could, I think I could do that. I think I could do that in the resolution. I can make a point that. The planning board deems that this is not special use permit, we're not granting it. We're okay with an amendment to the site plan for this purpose with the contingency that they get the permits from the supervisor. Which is in there. But we'll just eliminate.
There's no, there's no application affecting the site plan before us.
But you, no, it's a special use permit, but you, from what I'm hearing, if if this special use permit isn't applicative.
That's what I think. I don't think it should have come before us as a special use permit, but.
If it was for an activity, it would be, but it isn't.
You have to tell me what to do.
Well, we have to discuss this, I would think, because it's a little muddled. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different options. You could deny it without prejudice to come back and just refer the applicant to the uh. To the building department or supervisor for such permits as they might, yeah, but. I, looking for a clean way to, to wrap this up. Anyone have any thoughts?
Well, I agree, Stuart. I, I, I think we need to uh.
I have a question.
My motion was to.
I have a question.
Yes, Judy?
The. Permit, the, 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 the plan that we approved last year. Covers everything else she wants to do except amplified sound, right?
Correct.
So the only issue here is amplified sound. For which we, she doesn't need a special use permit to have an event that isn't amplified, right?
No. No. No, we gave a site plan approval for what it is they want to do on the site.
Right.
Terms of developing it.
There, there was outdoor. Stuff, there was picnic tables, there was, I don't, I don't think that we ever said, oh, what's happening there?
Right, we didn't regulate the use.
It's a pretty extensive.
We had that discussion, John and I had the site visit. That was discussed, it was presented.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I mean. We approve the site plan, you know, what they do with it, whether they have, you know, a circus or dancing donkeys or elephants, it's not our issue.
Well, I, I would, I agree with Peter's point. We really can't give a special use permit for something we're prohibited from approving. But the town.
I'm losing my internet. I don't know why it's. I can't hear anything.
Yeah, you're in and out.
You're moving around. So here's the deal, the code is, is, is faulty, we're not going to solve that right now. And so let's just, I agree with Peter, let's, let McKenna, even though I hate to have McKenna. Have the final.
I'm gonna move to a different location.
Because we can't solve this problem satisfactorily until the code changes, and that's not gonna.
So I think Liz should get her permits from the town for her remaining thing. I, I don't even. In all of, in all of our history in the planning board, I've never heard of getting a special use permit for an event. Ever.
We were told by Butch at the building department that we needed to come before the PNC. That's why we did this. So if we were to go back to them now and say, well, the PNC believes it's not appropriate. I don't think Bill McKenna could then review it. I think we need something that says we've been through some sort of process. I don't know the answer, I really don't, but um, we're doing it, keep it quiet.
Claire posted something on chat that might be worth sharing here. She is suggesting it's a good trial of whether thing can be done technologically. She didn't word it like that. But we normally would be the ones to approve a special use permit, but we are stuck. So if we say to Bill, it is our opinion that he ought to be able to do this if he feels it's the right thing to do. He takes all kinds of, you know, initiatives. Anyway.
Well, and as Liz pointed out, they've had, they've had an event, they met all the criteria, they didn't get busted for breaking the sound barrier, and none of the neighbors complained, so.
Which proves it can be done.
Right.
And that's used till tonight.
No harm, no foul. So.
I motion, we vote on something.
Second. Well, I was approaching it originally to uh, withdraw our approval pending a public hearing. But nobody seconded it at this point, and do we want to hold a public hearing? Do we, what do we want to do with the application? We can't grant it without holding a public hearing. We could defer it. And we can defer and see how the rest of the events go, you know, and then come back.
Right.
It's a thought.
Yeah, Liz has her hand up. Yes, Liz?
I just want to say, it really is a trial, so we really do, we've hired these decibel meters, they're huge things, they look, you know, like big things. And they have a little pointy microphone at the top. We put them in four corners, and it goes onto the internet to. Particular website that anybody can look at. We're gathering the data, we're going to do that on every one of these occasions, and then we're going to take it back. To um, to somewhere, I thought it was the listening committee that had been set up. To look at the noise ordinance, to show them the results of if you do. Sound outside in a particular way, in other words, you don't amplify it, you do set the decibel meters in place and you do control it. Then it should be possible to have music outside in Woodstock. That it's, but, but at the end of the year, if, if somebody says, no, it's not work, then we should withdraw it.
But if, if it's permitted, then you don't need a special use permit.
I would suggest that we uh, def, hope, we defer, we hold off the resolution. We defer further consideration uh, for, for 30 days, and let's see what the next couple of dates, what the experience is. And I would encourage the applicant to share the data with us in an informal way so that. We can, you know, be better educated, informed on, well, what are the decibel readings that you're getting? And what's the level of complaints, if any, that we're getting? Then we have, you know, more of a. Basis to understand what the present impact is, because this is really a trial period, so. That, that's a thought to just defer, defer further action and hold off the resolution for 30 days and then see where we are.
I, I'll go with that. I'll go with that.
It's 30 days enough. It's 30 days enough, Liz?
The next event is July the 4th, so that's, that's probably 32 days.
I want to suggest that she give it the summer.
Yeah, I was gonna say 90 days.
Right.
Labor Day.
Yeah. Let's do that.
The summer and table it, subject to receipt of information about what the actual effects are.
Okay, so we need something in writing. So just to give to the building department so they're in compliance. So I'll have to think about that.
You think about that. You're good at thinking about those things and figuring.
And I'll present it to you.
Do we need a resolution of some kind?
We need something, maybe a memo. Saying that we're, we're granting them this for the summer as a trial basis, something like that.
I move, we grant permission to the extent that we can under law, which is not clear, for this summer to be a trial to see what the effect of this kind of technological solution on the occasion of a limited number of special dates.
Right.
If the supervisor, if the supervisor approves those dates, we'll come back to this question in the fall.
Second. I agree. Everybody else okay? John, Lavelle?
Yes.
All right.
Stuart, you can do this.
I was more, I guess it's form over substance. I was more in favor of just deferring further action rather than approving something that we can't really approve legally under the code language. That's my occupational cross to bear. So.
It's uncharted ground, but we, we gotta, Liz go forward and, and we gotta go forward, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have a trial period, but I'm going to abstain at this point.
Okay.
So you have enough.
James?
And I do encourage, oh, I'm sorry. You got enough votes?
I do.
Yeah. Brian vote? Okay, good.
He seconded it, so.
Okay, good. So I do look forward to receiving the data, so I want to be better informed on this as we go forward.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, so planning board, I will, I will work on something less, less formal than a resolution. We will, we'll figure that out.
Circulated around.
Continue, you're doing great. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your, thank you for your patience, Lizzie. This must be.
I wish I understood it a bit more, but thank you anyway. Bye-bye.
All right. Well, if anybody else had anything else, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Take care. Thanks, Melissa.
I'd like to see what Nick does with this in the newspaper.
I know, it's always a question. It's always a question.
He's very good. He listens to the recordings, I think.
He does. I literally scan and hope my name's not in there every time. I think this is good. I might, oh, she left me.